Get ready, Dan. I think you're gonna be in here in a second. Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 28 River Falls City Council Meeting. First, we're gonna do a stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Kristy, cover roll call, please.
Good.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here. Okay, next we have approval of the minutes for the May 14th.
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, now our approval of the bills with Mr. Watson.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $627,574.22, subject to the comptroller.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, before we have public comments, I'd just like to read a proclamation which honors the 100th anniversary of Wisconsin ratifying the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, granting national suffrage to women on June 10th, 2019. Whereas on June 10th, 1919, the state of Wisconsin became the first state in the Union to ratify the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, granting national suffrage to women. And whereas this came after years of work by many women's rights groups that began working on the issue even before Wisconsin's statehood. The amendment became part of the United States Constitution on August 26, 1920. And whereas a committee comprised of representatives from the UWRF Library, River Falls Historic Preservation Commission, the Pierce County Historical Association, the River Falls Public Library, the Tuesday Club, and the AAUW was formed to commemorate this important piece of Wisconsin history. And whereas on this anniversary, we wish to celebrate that progress that has been made towards securing women's full participation in our democracy and renew our commitment to securing equal rights, freedoms, and opportunities for all women. Now therefore, I, Mayor Dan Toll, and of the city of River Falls, do proclaim June 10th, 2019, as the 100th anniversary of the state of Wisconsin recognizing women's suffrage and urge the residents of River Falls to join in celebrating this great milestone. Events are being scheduled for June 10th, and a community program will be held at the River Falls Public Library on June 19th, given under my hand and seal of the city of River Falls this 28th day of May, 2019. And now they'd like to say, they'd like to say something for us when they'll lead off the public comments.
Thank you very much for recognizing us and having this proclamation. It really is a very important time. Wisconsin was the first state to ratify the election, though it wasn't the amendment. However, it was not the first state to sign it. However, the, there was, um, somebody's father took the document and got to Washington before Michigan and Illinois, thus giving us the title of first state in the Union to ratify the amendment to the Constitution. We're going to have a speaker on June 19th who will discuss this. Unfortunately, there, most of the activity occurred in the southeastern part of the state. However, the Tuesday Club in River Falls was a strong advocate, and we found information that the senator from our region also voted in favor of it. I would like to add to the list of participants, the St. Croix Historical Association, who is going to be one of our sponsors as well. Our committee is composed of a very wide group, and I have some of the members here, dressed in regalia, uh, looking and thankful that we didn't have to wear these in 2019. We have buttons for each of the mayor and the council members, which we're going to pass out, and it says, "Vote for Women."
Okay. Thanks.
And also the flyers, and we hope that you, as council members, distribute this, tell people about it, because it should be a real happy event. Distributing the pins are Julie Hubel and Kathy Otto. Mary Baumgartner is here. Elise Noonie is here. Have I missed anybody? But we really thank you for your time, and thank you especially for your acknowledgement.
Okay. Thanks, ladies. Greatly appreciate it. Okay, so yeah, uh, we're in public comments, so if there's, if there's anybody else that has anything they'd like to talk about, now would be the time.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Boden. I have spoken before, and I'm going to again encourage you to refrain from at this time taking another sip from the Kenny. Uh, I know that you are going to be asked to approve the specific implementation plan for the Depot City Station, and I just want to be on record and express my deep concern about the state of the river in our community. We cannot control the runoff from farm fields or the loss of the water table to farm and housing developments. However, you and we can control what happens as the river moves into our space here in town. As a resident of Clark Street, I have watched the erosion over the last few superstorms and the annual spring thaw and melt. Those situations have made me much more concerned about public safety on Main Street as the East Bank suffers, and this bank was breached several times. The loss of trees, as well as nesting habitat for geese and other migratory birds, is something that has been noted by other organizations. The impact of walling off the river with a four-story building, two-story, four-story buildings, will add heat and pollution that will negatively impact fishing and that tourism potential, as well as general enjoyment of the river. This floodplain could expand with changing river habits that are 100% unpredictable. It is believed that storms will continue in intensity. We know that as more land opens up, the runoff will continue to push sediment into the river, therefore having unforeseen impacts. I encourage you to continue to do investigation that is perhaps not required by law, but in terms of your ethical responsibility, as well as your elected responsibility to represent all residents, um, I would encourage you to really do right by future generations and secure a healthy river system. This field that hasn't been mowed, because now that it's not city property anymore, um, it's really exciting to see that for the first time in 10 years since I've lived here, there is a forest growing. The giant tree that you see, uh, out front of my house on Clark Street is a black maple, which was an indigenous Wisconsin tree that is almost 100% extinct, that property and that tree, um, were chosen by Nathaniel Powell. There's a dam named after him. Uh, I believe that even though that tree is close to 300 years old, it was a, um, it was an impressive tree even back then. I believe that he settled up where he did because of the floodplain. And that tree is a testament to the fact that this area has been very lucrative in terms of development and the ability to allow some of those trees to build back a unique ecosystem that could be reestablished and have a more maximum benefit to our current quality of life, as well as the benefit of all. I was grateful last week to participate in the River Falls Public Montessori Elementary Green Day. Some of you may have been able to see from this building lots of children running and playing and really enjoying learning about our access to the river, the unique opportunities that we have. But we talked about water ecosystems, and we talked about how water stays in the ground, moves into the clouds, how water moves, and, uh, the children really felt connected. And to me, that is what, um, we, we talk a lot at Montessori about virtues, um, but I think that expanding on virtues is having values. And the values that the city recognizes, I just want to remind you, are to put people first, and, and I agree, but we do also need to consider the birds and the bees and the flowers and the trees, and those that don't have a voice, but also fall, I believe, under our purview of responsibility. To pursue excellence, I get that, I really do, but again, I feel that that means looking further down the line and acting with integrity. I believe that 100%, and so I am grateful to, well, those women that are still here somewhere, but to the state of Wisconsin for standing up for many things that over the last 100 years have led to really positive advancements and connected in community. Embracing change, I understand that that's something that I may have to do as the sunlight is blocked out from my yard and my house by this giant building, but I, I understand also that embracing change means looking for other solutions and not always going with the quickest. Serving our community, again, I feel that that means not just the voting public, not just the slim percentage of our population that participates in events like this, but serving our community fully. And to consider future generations, that really is my biggest concern about speaking out. There are other housing needs in our community, um, that are more pressing. There are other locations and options for this project. Granted, you might have to change the name. Uh, again, I am deeply concerned at the fast tracking of this process through the Planning Commission. Um, I feel that there is much that is unresolved, um, that was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting, and yet it was still pushed forward here to get council's approval. I understand that staff is working really hard to meet developer demands and get this narrow window for approval pushed, and to me, that is again, another deep disappointment that the city council in your last session approved a waiver to delay reporting, uh, the housing affordability study for this community. I think that is something, obviously it will be impacted once this project is on the books. All of that just feels like a conflict of interest for the greater good, um, in interest in short-sighted, short-term gains, um, and really bailing, not failing, not helping the future generations. So I encourage you, again, to just slow down with this process and let us enjoy what we have, and look to potentially rebuilding and growing in a different direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boden. Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to say?
I live in River Falls. I've come to discuss the Depot and City Station apartment buildings. So let's be honest, regardless of architectural interest and well-planted landscaping, what we're talking about are two apartment buildings, and they will always look like apartment buildings. But what I want to address is more important than brick and mortar, impervious surfaces, stormwater runoff, and even more important than the Kenny River. What I want the city to think about are the people. You see, each of these apartments are gonna have a door, and behind each door will live a family. A family who has made a deliberate choice to move to River Falls to make this their home. Let's think about the people for a minute. The empty nesters, who will be within easing walking distance of a renowned library and can take in a first-run movie at a reasonable price. The stay-at-home dad, who can put his little guys in a stroller, grab a tricycle and the dog, and take a walk around Lake George, skip rocks, feed the ducks, as long as Susan Reese isn't around, um, and collect the red and yellow leaves, uh, in the autumn. He can run over to the dollar store and grab some milk. What about the teenager, whose parents work? She can grab her bicycle, go to Glen Park, and go to a swimming pool. She can grab an ice cream cone with her friends. The visiting trout anglers and kayakers that we're trying so hard to impress might spend money at the River Falls gassing up and buying some ice. They might hit the bars and grab a meal. They may even spend the night at a hotel. But will the trout anglers and kayakers stop by Brian Dopkins and have their taxes prepared, or go to Freeman's to have their, their prescriptions filled, or to Jerry Ginsburg's and have their eyes checked? Of course not, but these families will. If we want to breathe new life into downtown and prove our economics and create a diverse business base, we can achieve that not through seasonal tourism, but by bringing in families who participate in our economy, attend our schools, join our local organizations, and build from the bottom up. So these apartments are just that, brick and mortar. No doubt that the Gerard Company will make showstoppers out of them, and I wish them success. It'll be our inaugural accomplishment of the Kenny Corridor. But no matter how these buildings look on the outside, let's not dismiss the families who have chosen to live on the inside. Thank you.
Thanks, Patricia. Anybody else? Okay, next we'll move on to, uh, change of agent for, uh, the Whole Earth Corporation. I need a motion on this.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the change of agent for Whole Earth.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I might ask a question?
Yep.
Could I ask Ms. Teague to come forward, please?
Please.
Okay, well, just up the microphone. I don't think it's necessary for you to sign in.
Okay.
As I mentioned to you before, I, I ask every agent, regardless of the facility, three questions when they're becoming a liquor licensed agent. I do see that you have experience in, in the hospitality industry and so forth, but this is, this is a process I always go through. Do you possess a responsible bartender server's license?
Yes, I do.
Do you understand that the requirements of an agent? Do you understand that if there's a alcohol-related violation, even when you're not present, you're still responsible for it?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a first and second. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, first, next we'll, we'll close the council hearing, open up a public hearing on the annual liquor license and beer license renewals, and we'll have the hearing disposition by motion for each liquor class. Is there anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, we'll close the, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing. First, Mr. Morissette's got a couple of questions for some agents.
Mr. Mayor, I noticed in the application, there are two new agents, Quick Trip South and Jamma or Bros. If I could ask them, or ask you to, if that's okay?
Yes, please, come forward.
Get a repeat of the last, last, uh, three questions.
Hi.
Uh, Ms. Grove, you, do you possess a bartender's license, or bartender's responsible server's license?
Yes, I do.
Do you understand the rule, uh, the requirements of an agent? Do you understand that if, uh, an alcohol-related violation occurs, even if you're not there, you're responsible?
Yes, I do.
And then is it Mrs., Ms. Stan?
Yep.
Uh, this kind of become an old habit now. Uh, do you possess a responsible bartender server's license?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Uh, do you understand the requirements of an agent?
Yes.
Okay, and you understand that if a violation occurs, even if you're not there, you're responsible?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. That's all I have, Ms. Grove.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we're gonna do, before we get started, we'll do a quick roll call to make sure everybody is here, everybody's represented. First, we'll start with Aldi's. Okay? Uh, the American Legion?
Here.
There you go. Okay. Uh, Bob and Steve's?
Here.
Okay. Uh, Sports Bar and Grill, Bo's, or Bros', I'm sorry.
Bros.
Uh, Divine Liquors?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Dick's Hometown Liquor. There we go. Emma's. There we go. Uh, the Fall Theater.
Here.
Uh, Family Fresh Market. Okay? Uh, Holiday Store, Holiday, Holiday Station Store. Dean. Uh, Johnny's.
Here.
Juniors.
Here.
Uh, hang on one second here. Got to cross one off. Okay, um, uh, Quick, Quick Trip Store, 453.
Here.
Okay. Uh, Lazy River. Perfect. Luigi's.
Here.
Main Streeters.
Here.
Uh, Mariachi Loco.
Here.
There we go. Uh, Mavericks.
Here.
Okay. Mel's.
Here.
Moonshiners.
Here.
Uh, Pizza Hut.
Here.
River Falls Copper Cattle.
Here.
River Falls Golf Club.
Here.
Uh, Moose Lodge. Uh, Seilavee Bistro. Not here, okay? They'll wait till next time. Uh, Shooters. Yep. Uh, Steve's Pizza.
Present.
Okay? Uh, the Weed Market Co-op. There, yep, you're already up here. Uh, Westwind Supper Club.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks for coming, guys. I know this, this is a big part of your business, so I'm glad to see you all here. Okay, so, next we'll move on to, uh, the different groups. All the applications in the group are considered approved without modification contingent that all licensing conditions are met at the time of issuance. If, uh, if the council wishes to modify a license, including amending the premises, description, or adding any conditions, that license will need a separate motion. Amendments and modifications to a license should be clearly stated in the public record. Uh, so let's go on to, uh, we'll go on to the Class A beer licenses and Class A cider-only licenses. This would be for, um, Bob and Steve, both Bob and Steve stores and Holiday Station Stores.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we grant the renewals for the Class A beer and cider-only license.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I, I think this is just general for all agents and bar owners, license holders, um, not just the ones that are on the docket right now. Um, I know we live in a college town. Um, I know a big portion of your business is alcohol sales. I'm just asking you and imploring you, um, train, make sure you're training your, um, staff to observe and identify intoxicated individuals. I know most of you have done a fantastic job of not over-serving our population in the city of River Falls, but it, it's a tragedy when we see, um, people walking out in the street and falling over drunk, puking in our streets. Um, we're bringing our kids down to the movie or down to a, a dinner, and someone comes walking out highly intoxicated only to walk into another location. Um, I just ask you to be mindful of over-serving folks. Let's make sure if people are slurring their speech, um, stumbling out, that they have a safe ride home. Um, obviously, what they do after they walk out of your establishment isn't necessarily a responsibility, but we all know it could be, right? I just ask you folks to, to make sure that you're being observant. These folks have families at homes, they have people that love them. Uh, let's make sure that we're taking care of them just as well as we're taking care of ourselves. So.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we'll go on to Class A liquor and Class A beer, which would include Aldi's, Divine Liquors, Erickson's Diversified, um, Dick's Hometown Liquor, both Quick Trip Stores, um, Weed Market. Um, do we want to do, do I list Walgreens, Zenas, they're not here tonight, or should we wait?
Don't list them.
I probably shouldn't list them if, if the council doesn't wish to approve it.
Okay. Okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant renewals for the combination Class A liquor and Class A beer licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, next will be, uh, renewals for Class B beer licenses, which include Fall Theater, Luigi's Pizza, Pizza Hut, and Steve's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We renew the Class B liquor license contingent that all licensing requirements are met.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, next will be, uh, renewals for Class B beer licenses, which include Fall Theater, Luigi's Pizza, Pizza Hut, and Steve's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We renew the Class B liquor license contingent that all licensing requirements are met.
Second.
Uh, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next would be Class B, uh, liquor and Class B beer, which would include the American Legion, Bo's in Mine, Bros', Emma's, Johnny's, Juniors, the Lazy River, Main Streeters, Mariachi Loco, Mavericks, Mel's, Moonshiners, the Copper Kettle, the Golf Course, the River Falls Golf Course, uh, Moose Lodge, Seilavee, Shooters, and Westwind.
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Takeoff Seilavee, right?
Yep, sorry, not listing Seilavee.
Uh, I move to grant renewals for the combination Class B liquor and Class B beer licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at time of issuance.
Second.
Okay, got a first and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next would be just Class C for wine licenses, and this would be, uh, Steve's Pizza.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we grant renewal of Class C license, uh, wine licenses contingent that all licensing requirements are met at the time of issuance.
Oh, wait, would, would, I'm sorry. Wouldn't this include Fall Theater, too?
I'm looking at the motion, and it doesn't look any different.
Yeah, we got.
Falls Theater and Steve's Pizza.
I think Falls Theater's a new application. This is a renewal, right?
Oh, that's right, okay, you're right. Sorry.
So this is a renewal.
Sorry about that. Okay, so this is renewal for Steve's Pizza. We got a first and a second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, this one is granting a Class C wine license to Falls Theater.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We grant the Class C wine license to Falls Theater.
Questions or comments?
She's already an agent, so I'm not gonna ask her.
Yep. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
That didn't take long.
Nope. Okay, so next we will move on to, well, first we're gonna have, yep. Oh, yeah, first we'll wait for everybody to get out of the, they always leave now and miss all the fun stuff.
Nothing else, it's a reason for everybody to come and get to the theater. Yes, it is. That's right, yeah. Well, I know which one I would choose based on who's still present.
Okay, next we'll close the council hearing up, I'm gonna open up the public hearing on a resolution approving the specific implementation plan, blah, 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 for the Depot, for the Depot and the City Station. Um, is there anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to say about this? Otherwise, we'll close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We approve the resolution for the, uh, special implementation plan for City Depot Station.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things that I think I've identified in the past, um, you know, we, we had a city needs anal, uh, city housing needs analysis, which addressed, um, the full spectrum of housing that the city of River Falls needs, everything from low-income housing, um, to senior and market rate. Um, I know that there's been work done on trying to address, um, affordable housing or low-income housing in the city of River Falls, and unfortunately, we were like number seven on the WIDA credits on that, and that's a huge part of, um, paying for development. Um, I know we've got a couple of other projects that are going on here in the city of River Falls, and, uh, one happened to be right next to the city of River Falls, um, which was identified in a housing needs analysis that the city of River Falls did. Um, and I think that's gonna meet, uh, 50 units for senior housing, and I, we heard someone speak regarding, um, bringing folks down to the city, um, base down here that's gonna walk our trails, um, gonna shop in our shops and, and bring an economic factor that we don't necessarily have right now. I think it's a great use of space. Um, we have a facility just outside of town here, right on the corner of, uh, what, South Main and Double F there. Um, those folks are kind of trapped. They don't really have a lot of places to go. They got a nice garden out there and a nice little walking path around their facility, but if they want to get anywhere, one, they have to have a vehicle or a, a safe ride to get there. Um, this brings them right downtown, right next to where a ton of people are gonna be. Um, if something happens to them, they're in a safe environment. Um, they have the city staff here that are walking to lunch and in and out all day, so I, I don't foresee any of them walking by somebody laying on the ground that needs help. Um, and when we think about the older generations, these folks are actually people that care about our environment, care about our community if they're making an intention to live here. Um, so if they see trash or they see something along the river that's not right, they're more apt to probably call it in and say something to our city staff. Um, obviously, that brings a different component, but we welcome that to make sure that we're taking care of our city. Um, on, on the second note to that, um, yep, there, there's, um, some flood, um, issues that come about in the city of River Falls, and I know that, uh, we're working with a developer that has, uh, a great track record of working with the city. If there's something that needs to be addressed, they jump on it pretty quick and work with our city staff to make sure that they're, uh, addressing their properties, and I, I have no doubt that that's gonna change going forward. Um, you can drive beyond Dairy Queen down on the south end where a trailer park used to be and look at the housing that's down there right now. I mean, that's a spectacular sight of, uh, what these folks have done in the past, and um, I think, uh, the building next to City Hall is gonna, um, be a great, uh, line of sight for people in the community for a long, a long time. Unfortunately, it does, uh, right across the street from other residences. the building next to City Hall is gonna be a great line of sight for people in the community for a long, a long time. Unfortunately, it does, right across the street from other residences, but I just, I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Hal?
Thank you. I agree with some of the comments that were just made. I do think that we need denser downtown housing in order to support this main street, so I'm not gonna argue with that, and I think there are a lot of positive aspects to this project. I do want to just talk a little bit about the process that has happened, this is, and talk, and just do a little bit of education, if you'll bear with me for a moment, about what a planned urban development is and why it's different than your typical development in town. You know, a planned urban development is often a development where we are essentially changing the rules for how a development occurs. Often, it is denser, or there are other designs that are taken into consideration that wouldn't normally be available both to the city or to, or to a developer under standard regulations. And there's a lot of positive about that. It gives the city an opportunity to negotiate, if you will, on amenities that we want to see in our community, and it also allows just for a lot more flexibility. We have a PUD, or Planned Urban Development Ordinance, which isn't that difficult to understand, it's, it's fairly straightforward. There are five criteria that are required or that are used as the basis for determining the acceptability of an application. One, it has to benefit the community. It has to, the, the character and intensity of the land use has to be compatible with the physical nature of the site, it has to be create an attractive environment and a sustained aesthetic and ecological desirability. It has to not adversely affect the provision for school or other services, it has to not create traffic problems, or unduly increase the density of population or the intensity of use to the detriment of the areas right outside of it. So, it needs to, you know, be economically feasible and not adversely impact the city's economics, and then it needs to adhere to our engineering design standards, and it needs to preserve and maintain open space. So, my main issue with kind of, so that's all great. I, I think what I have been disappointed in this particular process is the fact that coming into the Plan Commission meeting, I did not see all of these issues addressed by staff, and there was a laundry list of items that kind of were not yet done in the specific implementation plan as it was presented. The Plan Commission voted to move ahead with the contingency that those, that, that list of items was to be dealt with, and we have in our packet a statement from staff that, except for the approval on the stormwater, everything else has been taken care of. I just think that our process right now, and I, I can't remember exactly when the PUD ordinance was passed, but I have a feeling that when it was passed, the Plan Commission was meeting every two weeks. We have, there's a, there are some time constraints on, on how a PUD moves through the process, and there are 60 days for the Plan Commission to basically approve it and move it on to the city council from the day that it's, the plan is submitted. There is a lot of back and forth that has to go on between city staff and the developer in that 60 days, and so I don't, I understand that it's very difficult for staff to, and the developers, engineers, and everybody else to make all these pieces because there's a lot of back and forth. But my feeling is that I'd like to see the Plan Commission take up a longer time period, a 90-day time period or something like that, so it can be brought to the Plan Commission, we can give it our comments, get it back to the city staff, and get it back to the developer, so that the Plan Commission can do its due diligence and actually have an impact on the specific implementation plan, rather than just saying, yeah, I believe everything here is okay, and hope for the best. You know, we're supposed to have an influence over the way this project looks, and that is just not happening with the current process. So, anyway, I, that's for another day, but when it comes to approving these projects, I'm looking for city staff and the Plan Commission to be going over these specific areas that we are required to use to determine the acceptability of one of these projects. It's not in the packet that we've got, it wasn't in the packet that the Plan Commission had, and so it hasn't been available to the public for them to come forward and make their suggestions or criticisms or whatever. I don't think it's good government to do things that way, and while I do think this will probably be a fine project, I'm disappointed in the way it's come about. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, got a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, next we'll move on to, we'll close the council hearing again and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2019-07, an ordinance amending section 10.12.030. This is the official parking control map. This will be revising public parking zones on the 700 block of St. Croix Street, and I'll entertain a motion on this. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I come back?
Is there anybody in the audience that has anything they'd like to say about this? Okay, close the public hearing and reopen up the council hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve ordinance 2019-07.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we move on to consent agenda. Acknowledging the following minutes, Historic Preservation Commission of 410, the Planning Commission of 319 and 402, the Park and Rec Advisory Board of 417, Utility Advisory Board of 415, West Central Wisconsin Bio-Solids Facility Commission of 321, and the Bid Board from 49, from 49. Next one is a resolution regarding overweight permits for the West Central Bio-Solids Facility, and this resolution would recommend to, by, was recommended by the Utility Advisory Board, and it would allow staff to move forward in pursuing legislative action regarding overweight permits for our hauling stuff to bio-solids. Does anything, does anybody have anything to pull? Otherwise, I will...
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we move on to Administrator's Report. If anybody's got anything for Scott, or...
I do have a couple of things for the council, if you'll allow. One, I just want, I did send an email to the council indicating that we would not convene in the closed session, that I didn't think we were ready to, to discuss the items, nor, nor was I satisfied with the way in which I communicated the topic of the closed session, although it meets, clearly meets the legal standard. We've set a higher standard for ourselves in notifications, so we won't be convening in the closed session today. I suppose, I don't recommend you, the council can certainly do that, if they'd like to, it's your, it's your call. I would, I would recommend you not, we can do that at a following meeting. I, I want to recognize the work of the City Clerk's Office. Amy, regarding the liquor licenses, we have, we have a lot of quantity, we are getting increasingly better quality, but I would suspect that the licensees would agree that the quality is impart a lot to the staff here at the city, so the work that they're doing is important to make sure that it goes as smooth as it just did. As a lot of liquor licenses, we're following a lot of archaic and frankly not logical state statutes when it comes to liquor licenses, and so I think it, it looks really easy, and it's not. So I appreciate staff's work in there, I just want to make sure that, that council understands that. I do think the licensees increasingly appreciate it and, and say, say as much to staff, even if they don't say it to the council, but I'll pass it along. What, what just happened there in a very short period of time took a lot of orchestrating and cajoling and communicating and counterwork and phone work to get it as clean as it is, and I, that's no negative on the applicants, I'm just, we've had several clerks and deputy clerks over the last seven to eight years, and I think the licensees have only seen a good continuation of, of operations, so I'm proud of that. Understand that the decision has been made, that the project has been approved, and I appreciate that, I just, I do want to mention that the memo in tonight's packet isn't the only memo regarding the Gerard project, there certainly is lots of other background and history on that project. Just, just to kind of bring it full swing, it, we first created the TID number seven on January 13th, 2009, which happened to be four months before I even started working for the city. There was an agreement with Frisbee for a significant development project on April 14th of '09. The Gerard optioned the purchase, which included a number of details regarding the, the plans of this project, was executed at a council meeting on May 11th, '07. So, we will always take feedback about improvements to the process. I, I don't believe that staff intended, nor did we fast-track the project, per se. It's, it's been a number of years in the coming, and I think there's a number of meetings there, but I appreciate, we have some things to learn from, from council and Plan Commission about their preferences going forward, but we, we endeavor to have a transparent and participatory process, so people are aware of what's happening in their community and have the ability to, to have a say in what, what's going on. I do also want to mention that the housing affordability reporting that, that we've asked for a waiver, I think the council is aware of this, but we're not opposed to reporting on housing affordability. We think the state made an error in allowing the Builders Association to dictate how reporting should be done by cities for the sole benefit of them and their lobbying efforts, and they were able to get that put into, to law, and there's a waiver process for cities to use when they think a reporting requirement is onerous or unnecessary to protect the public health, welfare, and safety, and we believe that's the case with that particular reporting requirement. We have certainly no objection with reporting on what we're doing, just that particular requirement, which is, which essentially asks cities to hire consultants to do work on behalf of the Builders Association so they can lobby against impact fees and other things that cities are, are doing, in my opinion. That's why that was put in place, so...
Scott, if I may, Mr. Mayor? What, so you bring up impact fees, you know, and that's kind of what they're lobbying against, and, and obviously, they have a stake in building housing, right? So, they want us to move forward and pay for that consultant and do all this work, and so they can come forward and build, and I get that, that's their business. When we have impact fees, what have we historically used those impact fees for?
Yeah, impact fees are, to, to just answer the question without taking us into a debate or discussion...
Don't want to get too off-topic.
Our impact fees are based on the cost of services provided on, to that dwelling unit or that new dwelling unit, so we, we had a study originally, I think it was by Ellers, back in those times when the Plan Commission was probably meeting twice, twice a month, I think that was one of the topics that they took up, and, and then we've updated them a little bit since, but that's, just wanted to make those three points, and I appreciated the, the work that's going on in the city, we've got a lot of activity going on, and construction is occurring despite, despite the rain. It's actually not been too bad, too wet, it seems to come, to come, and, and we have our days, so to speak, but overall, we're drying out a little bit, and things are looking pretty good, and there certainly is a ripe dandelion crop in River Falls from what I can see, so I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Scott, just, as long as she's here, Sergeant Posel, Posel provided us with a grant for some, for some fingerprint things, and I wanted to just thank her publicly for that effort, and, and appreciate those type of, going above and beyond.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else have anything for Scott? Okay, move on to the Comptroller's Report.
The Comptroller's Report for April 2019. General Fund revenues through the end of April were $3,926,787, or 36% of the annual budget. Revenues in April included $171,884 in transportation aids and annual lottery credits from the state of Wisconsin, and $33,215 in quarterly cable franchise fees. Expenditures for the same period were $3,306,79, or 28% of the annual budget, for a net of revenues over expenditures of $896,108.
Thanks, Stan. Just one quick thing, I just want to mention, to remind everybody about our first summer picnic with the council will be next...
Thursday?
Oh, next is Thursday, the sixth. At, it starts at six o'clock? Jeez, that's terrible, I can't remember. Six o'clock?
Six P.M.
Six to 7:30.
Six is, yes, I'm sorry. So, but it's on our website, it's all over the place, so please come out to it and get some free hot dogs and ice cream, man, can't go wrong.
It's in Sterling Parks Pond.
Yes, Sterling Parks Pond.
Pond's Park.
Okay, I think that's it.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?